Chair of the Finance Committee, there's no quorum tonight, so the Finance Committee meeting will not be taking place.
All right, I'll call the Committee on Ordinance, Strategy and Rules to order. First item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the meeting events from the previous meeting. Is there a motion to, we have the reading and approval, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Racist crowd here in the Ordinance Committee. The second item on our agenda is the Goustavino-Rientz LLC for proposed zoning amendment to add a new section of the Woburn zoning ordinance for the Central Square overlay district.
Good evening.
Evening. Lots of...
Yeah. Johnnybug.
Anyway.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, the, as you know, you held your initial public hearing last month. Planning Board held its initial public hearing and has continued it for further review to tomorrow night. So tonight, what we're proposing to do is that, you had made a request to see some elevation plans, so John is going to present those elevation plans, then some cleanup of the proposed ordinance that I'll review, and then Peter will go through and respond to some of the questions that were raised at the public hearing. So, John, why don't you start with the elevations?
Okay. If I start to go too long, you wave me down.
We'll give you the hook.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, you've seen a lot of this before, but I'll just go over it. This is, this is not the development that we conceived of 26 years ago. It's as a result of a lot of conversation with the neighborhood, and we didn't think that we would want to do townhouses in the front. Quite frankly, here, they, they lose money, but meeting with former, the former mayor, current, and other neighbors, they felt like it was really important to maintain the scale and the character of the original, of the original Central Square. And we couldn't argue with that, so we changed our plan and moved the more major development in the back. This site is, fortunately, and unfortunately, at times, slopes 20 feet from the front of that Main Street to the back where it hits the canal and the tow road, the historic tow road. Let's see if this thing, this thing works or not. Okay. All right, so, so back here is the canal. I don't know if you can see that little tiny dot, and the delta in elevation is minus 20 feet from here to, to Main Street. So, we kept the development at, at Main Street to three stories, and then we stepped down to five stories as it goes down into more of a valley back there. And the original Goustavino building dated in 1907, again, can I get this, is in the back. Is it okay if I, I'm just going to use it, my fingers? And so, this is the original Goustavino building, which is really very significant nationally and equally internationally. So we have people coming from, from Spain and from Europe to come and see the building because it's the place where Raphael Goustavino developed his business in 1880 and grew it to 1960, and did some amazing, amazing ceramic tile and ceramic tile arches all around the country, including in Washington, D.C. So I could spend an hour talking about that. But you wanted to see some elevations, so we're showing you some of the things that we've developed a little bit further. This is the edge of the townhouse. Let me go back for a second. So this view that you're seeing is coming from here, looking down this, this alley. We, when we, this is, this is number 31, I think, of more than 30 versions of what we've looked at and also talked to neighbors about. And the, the idea here is to preserve not only the historical significance of the original 1907 building and factory, ceramic tile factory, but also to preserve its connection with Main Street and open up its connection with Main Street. So we've kept this, this view corridor open like this. So what you see here is, is that view from the new intersection. As, as you know, we were the successful bidder, so to speak, on the fire station, and that will come down and we will move the entrance. Right now, our current entrance, it goes through this building. We're going to move that entrance here so that this becomes Clinton Street Extension. Again, I'll go back just a second. Here is Clinton, here is Clinton Street, and now, and right now, you have to do a dipsy-doodle. You have to go a right-hand turn and then a left-hand turn to go into our property. And so what we're doing is straightening this out and putting in a set of lights that go straight across. And you come in and you're going to look through here. So, this is showing the side view of the three-story townhouses that will line Main Street. And again, if you don't mind me going back and forth, a number of the existing homes actually sit right on the sidewalk or are back four feet from the sidewalk. And so we will be taking all of those down. There's 11 properties along the front, and we'll be removing all of them and we'll be setting back anywhere between 10 and 20 feet from the original curved line. So we'll be setting back, then we'll be developing a landscaped broad sidewalk. It's been the kind of, I've been in the city, our company has been in the city for over 30 years. We developed 130 New Boston Street back 30 years ago. My whole life, I've been, I grew up in St. Barbara's and in and around Woburn, so I, I love Woburn. I live in Lexington, I love Woburn. And the, the activity that happens here during the parade is really kind of special. And so when we developed this, we thought about, how can we activate this? How can we make it user-friendly? How can we put, how can we provide some spaces where we can put out some seating, you know, for the parade and stuff? But that's not, you have to, you have to tell me the stuff. So that's what this is looking at now. So this is a five-story building, and what we've done is, given sort of concern about the height and the prominence, we've, we've notched it back and set it back on the fifth story here and also in the rear of the building, and we have tied in the materials to the materials that exist on the original Goustavino building, which is our corporate headquarters, and we're staying there. So, a, a little brick, a little stone, a little natural stone, field stone, that will tie into this field stone on the edges of the building, and then the whole, the whole backside of this building is actually the original, the one side of the building. This is the backside historically. The, the original building, you, you entered, you entered this driveway that came down here, and we're closing that off because the neighborhood wants it closed off. But that was the original front of the building. The canal was in operation from 1800 to 1850, closed it down, and then it became a railway, and that's what attracted Raphael Goustavino from New York City to here, to build his factory here, because number one, the clay was better here to make tile, and two was, it was a direct railroad access, and also we had a girlfriend here. Sorry. And the first president, first president of the company was actually the mayor of Woburn, William F. Blodgett, which was really kind of interesting. Anyway, trust, you got us, buddy. So that's, the materials, a little bit of wood, this is actually called pro dama, it's a wood-like material that looks like wood but won't flake and deteriorate. It will tie into the cedar and the materials here, brick will tie in, and then this will be a cement, a cement siding that will be like a, like a shingle and a clapboard. And that's another view. We come back in these views, the, the renderings of, of what the final landscape is going to look like, because if we put the final landscape in, you would say, we're just trying to conceal the building. What I really loved about them developing the property back 26 years ago was bringing in some of the things that I saw when I visited England and Paris, actually. The idea of doing boulevards and alleys and planting, if you've, if you've seen this, we planted a lot of arborvitae at eight-foot-on center, they were fast-growing, we sprinkled them so that they grew quickly, and then we trimmed them into a hedgerow so that as you drive into it, it feels like you're going into an old English kind of castle or, or property. And we're going to be doing the same type of thing here, and we'll be showing you more renderings of that as, as we go. We're seriously committed, you know, developers are notorious of showing you pictures of things that never come to pass. We're going to do this, and we're going to, we're going to make it as good or better than what we're going to be showing you. Again, there's a, this is a view, I mean, the backside of the townhouses that face Main Street, so there's a road that goes in between this building, and this is the road that leads to the original Goustavino building. And we'll be using field stone here to, again, tie in the materials. This is a view, an aerial view from behind the 1970s three-story building on, that sits on a 20-foot retaining wall here, which we would like to do something with eventually with, with your permission. We did a project in Philadelphia, our company is, is a construction company that started in 1922, so we're, I feel like I'm 102 years old, but we've done work all around the Northeast. And we did a project in Philadelphia where the, we commissioned a poster, a poster artist to work with the local school system to develop posters on the side of, of concrete retaining walls and, and walls. We, we think there's something to be done with this piece of concrete that, that sits there, but we can talk about that later. And so that's what you're seeing here is the four townhouses that sit out front. There's actually eight units in each one of these townhouses. We don't know whether we're going to end up with all of those out there right now. We may cut them back, we really don't know, we're going through the final, final process, but we wanted to show you where, where we are today. This shows the driveway coming down, a rotary, and then an entrance into the Boys and Girls Club. We've actually had meetings with the Boys and Girls Club, and they're kind of thinking, can we hold back on that entrance and have it as a future possibility? So Peter will actually talk a little bit more about that because Peter's been on the board of the Boys and Girls Club. So that gives you a sense of what's, what's designed there. Here's the scale. So we're the honest-to-God laser scans of what the buildings are, so the existing buildings are here, and they range from 26 to about 32 feet in the front. You see the fire station off on the left, and this is the scale of the four groupings of townhouses out front, so to give you a sense of what it's going to look like, if you will. This is a section through as if we sliced through the original, Main Street is here, the canal is back there at the edge of the wall, if we kept going, you know? And so it keeps going down, down, down. And so what you see is, here's the Wyman School, and by the way, we have, we're not proposing anything with the Wyman School. There's been some press that are saying that this development is going to impact the Wyman School. We're, we love the Wyman School, we would love to be part of its restoration, and I have a master plan for the whole Central Square area, but this development has nothing to do with it. So, coming across, this is, this is the, quite frankly, ugly, sorry, anybody's living there, that's here, but apartment building, 1970s, 1980s apartment building. That's the height of it, and then you come down to Main Street, this is the height of the townhouses, there's a level of garage below grade that you can enter from behind and drive in, and then there's three stories in front. And then, that's looking down the roadway, and you're seeing the edge of, of the townhouses as they curve around. And then this is a slice through what we call Building B, which is a building that goes back towards the Goustavino building. There's the Goustavino building, and you're not seeing Building A, which is a little bit lower in height than Building B here. See if I can show it, okay? We've been listening, this has been about a five-year process of listening to the neighbors and, and talking with the people that walk their dogs through, and, and thinking about this is, how can we, how can we get the mass that we need to be able to get the financing? And how can we make it look as unmaskable as possible? And how can we connect it with, with the city and with the kids and with the dog walkers and follow that circle? So, and how can we fix the intersections that are out there? We have some unusual intersections in our city. You know, I'm, I'm a civil engineer, and we often talk about Boston as being laid out by bovine engineers, cows that were just allowed to go. I think, I think Woburn puts, puts Boston to shame in some of the intersections that we've got. But anyway, sorry. The, so, we're, we're fixing right now, we're fixing, we're proposing to fix the Eaton and Wilcox and Main intersection. The way it's currently set up is, it requires, because it's so offset and jigged and jogged, there's a separate light cycle there for each one of those, and it's a game sometimes, coming down Eaton, you know, are you going to go, are you not going to go? It's like a game of who, the kamikaze game sometime, coming down there through that intersection. And coming here, traffic, because ways is now in traffic through our city, because the intersection with 93 and, and 95 is so bad, this is often very, very clogged. And a resident suggested, why can't we do a left-hand turn at the last council hearing that we have? And so we said, there's more than half a pavement there. So he said to our, our traffic engineer, would you go out there and take a look at it and validate that we can do that? And so we can, we can actually reduce this somewhat headed northbound to 13 feet, which is still generous, and we can put a, a left-hand turn lane and a through lane or a right lane, so a right turn and a straight through. So we're listening, and we're going to keep listening as we go through this, and I think that's going to fix that intersection. The status of that intersection is actually better after development than it is if we don't develop the sub. Now, that's not the case, Ed, we're going to be adding some traffic. You can't tell me that we're going to do more than 200 units here and not add some traffic, but we will address that responsibly and honestly with you. So, and then we widened the right-hand turn, turn lane here, because we're, what we're proposing to do here, as you know from the last time, is to close down this Lowell Street slip lane here, which turned into a one-way, and, and you need to have, you know, an unusually good pivot on your neck to be able to come all the way around and actually see that to get out onto Main Street. Yeah. You know, the older I get, the less I can turn my head. So we're proposing to close that and turn this into an honest-to-God park with, you know, some interesting kiosks that have information that tie into the, the Goustavino that, that inform people about how important this area was into architectural history, plus we'd like to do a small playground, jungle gyms. I, I got 15 grandchildren, so I'm constantly driving them, or my, my wife is driving them around to, to various playgrounds. So this would be a really cool place for a playground. So we're, we're talking about closing that down, but we have to facilitate this right-hand turn, so we have a separate right-hand turn comes around the corner and takes care of it. This is a quick view of how we're going to propose to fix Clinton Street by buying the fire station, demoing it, abating it of the asbestos and oil and stuff that's there, and then extending Clinton Street right through. And the Boys and Girls Club would like us to show this as dotted lines, as dotted lines here, and have that as an, you know, an option for them for their preferences. And that's, that's...
John, let me just interject on that for one quick sec. Julie's here from the club too. We met with Julie and Matt Donahue last, last week, I think it was. So I think the consensus is that the way, the way Charles Garden Lane works right now is actually pretty good, getting in and out. And I think where the club was headed with this, and then they talked to us and said, you know, we, we kind of would rather almost keep that, we were doing this as an accommodation partly for us to go to the Rotary, but we think we may be better off just going out to Charles Garden Lane. So we're looking at maybe keeping that, maybe there's some improvements to cross or something or other at the street, and then, like John said, maybe keeping the connection point viable, so that if we can make, if we need the connection down the road because it's too hard for the club to get out, I'm very close to the club, as many of you know, I was on various boards there and so forth, so not speaking for the club, and the club still needs to bring this by the full board to make a determination, and again, you can ask Julie any questions. So I think the way we should look at this is, we're willing to, the, the project is willing to make that, you know, a part of trying to get it out for the club, but we think it may be easier, and the club maybe think it's easier to just go out. It's also been a bear of a try in trying to get N-Star National Red to deal with easements over there, so that's been a pain in the backside to try to do that, that would alleviate this. So, when, when we come back with the project, if we, if you guys are, if you go forward with the rezoning, when we get to the special permit phase, we'll tighten this down and make this a part of the conversation. But I just want to bring it up early enough in the conversation so everybody knows kind of what's going through the constituents' head, you know, heads, so.
What he was referring to is the EverSource substation that's right there.
Yeah, which, which is, which is, which the whole front of the Boys and Girls Club, or a lot of it, is actually in easement. The driveway, probably 30 or 40 of our parking spots for the club are actually in that easement, so, you guys. So...
Okay, so, this is the park that we were just talking about. We're still thinking, we're thinking globally. We want to take this one step at a time, we're thinking about, look, we would like to inspire improvement of the retail here and the evolution of Jax to something else that can store to some other universe. So, that's part of our future aspirations. And we're back to what we're looking at. Let's take a look, and I, I think that's it, because they were afraid I was going to talk to you anymore.
There's a, we had about 15 questions that you all raised at the council meeting, which we've written some responsibility, but why don't we ask, you guys have questions on what you just looked at and maybe focus on, follow that first?
Can you make a motion to open it up?
Second.
I need somebody to make the underline. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so let's open up to non-voting members. Any questions from the council? House, Senate, or the popular vote?
So, I like what I see. My, my question is, it's quite a bit of surface area, impervious area. What do we, what are our designs for stormwater, stormwater management, snow management, and how does this all take and fit in? Is, you're going to use pervious material on, on, for the hot tub, impervious, you're going to, how do we, how do we negate that as a whole? Because there's quite a bit of surface area here, and it's, it's increasing, and you've got plantings, which aren't trees, which we all know that trees absorb more water and so on and so forth. So I'm just, I'm really curious about that, and a follow-up to that would be my other concern. I see the substation there, you've got enough juice to power this all up, and would you be using or implementing solar energy on any of these, either one of these apartments complexes that would be built? Obviously not the, 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 your office building, but because you don't want to, you don't want to lose the integrity of that, but I was wondering about the other two, the apartment buildings.
Well, we have full solar on, on the, on our office building.
Oh, you do?
We do. Yeah, we installed...
Very discreetly, I might add.
Three years ago, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like the parking lot podiums and stuff like that. It's, we have a great southerly exposure and it looked up great, so we laid it right into the roof and then right onto the flat roofs. And so it's, it's there doing its job.
Okay.
Empowering most of the use, like 80, 85% of the use of the building. So we, we just got to get people to turn their computers off at night. With respect to the drainage, that's our main concern, and Nick is here from Allen Measures, and perhaps he could address your concerns.
Come on up, Nick. Join the party.
Can we assume a chair?
Sure.
So, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, Nick Delacava, Allen Major Associate of Site Civils for the project. So, the shorter answer is, we don't have a design yet, but once we get into the design development, the, the stormwater system will be designed to meet all 10 stormwater standards from the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, as well as meet all the local requirements. We do anticipate using permeable pavers where we can as part of the landscape design. On a site like this, there's limited area to do, you know, surface stormwater basins above ground, so likely all of the stormwater will be managed underground, infiltrated, treated for the water quality volume, and then discharged. All of the stormwater will be managed underground, infiltrated, treated for the water quality volume and then discharged. Uh, back offsite to existing, uh, drainage points.
Is that going to be monitored gated so that you can monitor the flow into those? The, the, the stormwater?
So typically they're designed, um, to be online systems with emergency overflows. That go into bypass during the larger storm events. Um, and size, again, to treat that water quality volume, which is. On a site like this will be one inch times the entire impervious surface on the, on the property.
It's not quite going to be like this one at Stop and Shop, which we designed when I permitted that twenty years ago, which is actually like a vault. And that's almost above ground. So and that actually has cleanouts where you walk right in it. They clean it out if somebody could get in. They can't get in, it gets allocated out. Most people don't even know it's there. But that this wouldn't be that type. These would likely, I'm guessing, boy. Round chambers or whatever on the ground that you can't.
I just think about like these micro bursts that we get that all of a sudden four inches of rain drops out of the sky all at once.
Yeah.
This thing looks almost like a bowl.
Yeah. So how these systems are designed is, um, during larger storm events. There's weers built into underground manholes that allow when it, the. The surface water reaches a certain elevation, it bypasses and just leaves the property. Um, in this case, it'll be discharged into Cummings Brook, which is where all the runoff goes today.
Which was my other concern too. I don't want the Cummings Brook to overflow and then we flood surrounding neighbors and and so on and so forth.
Yep. So one of the, well, two of the standards in the handbook, uh, one is water quality volume. Uh, and then peak rate attenuation. And we will be reducing peak rates compared to the existing condition. Uh, with any stormwater design that we we end up doing.
Okay.
And that's a requirement.
Excellent. And you have, and you have enough juice from EverSource. EverSource is going to need to put some sort of transformers down there or.
Uh, I don't know if we've gone to that point yet. I don't think we've submitted load letters to EverSource, but. I don't think we're, we're able to answer that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Papalato?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I, I think one of the questions I raised in the, the, um, council was around traffic. Yeah. I'm sure you didn't address that, so I'll not bother with that. Um, what's the height, the height of the buildings, the, the houses that are there today versus the height of? The townhouses and then the condos behind?
Yeah, so there's a slide that shows it, but I'm going to give you one of these. I'm going to assume it's in here. So, and there's more. I don't know if you want to give the rest of the numbers.
So we accept the papers and make a panel of permanent records?
We might as well. In those.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
So this is, these are the actual measurements of the height. So most of these are between twenty-five and thirty feet.
Okay.
And then you can see these are actually almost overlaid right on top. So like, for example, this one is thirty feet to the top, I think that says right there.
Yep.
Ours are thirty-five to basically where the bottom of that crown is and then thirty-one. The building code, just, this should be building code because you don't actually measure to the feet idea. But just if you compare apples to apples, the point of this is about nine feet higher than that one today.
Okay. And then the, are they condos or townhouses or what's going behind these?
Yes.
Both everything?
You know, we don't, honestly, we don't know yet. We're, um, yeah, it's still, it's still TBD because of what they will. This is actually the line of it right here. So that is the line that's superimposed on back.
Okay.
Um, I think on this it shows. If this is the height of the building, so we were dealing with like sea level elevation, that'd be one sixty-five. Now, that's what's that say, Bill? One fifty?
Very, yeah.
One fifty-three? One sixty-five top of building B, one fifty-three, so it's about twelve feet higher. The likelihood is this is your car standing here. Or if you're, if you're on the street, you know, a six foot person somewhere standing in through here. You will, you will be able to see between the buildings. If you were standing over here on top of this building, you'll be able to see it. The likelihood as you drive past Main Street. That those four structures and they will be landscaping in between. You know, of the other ones. Uh, but that, but to answer your question directly, that's the proposed.
So the first level of houses on the street level are about ten feet higher than what's there today, roughly?
Correct.
And then there's another ten feet higher for the second tier.
Correct, correct. And this, this build, and the land is sloping down, as John mentioned, it goes down. As much as twenty feet from the front all the way to the back, but it's about a ten foot drop off of Main Street. Down to where these levels are. So like this garage, you can't see it, it's underground. You can see it from the backside.
Okay, thank you. Um. Do you own all of those homes on across the? Not yet. You own a bunch of them, but not all.
Yeah, we have agreements with, with several folks, but we don't have agreements with everybody.
Got it. Okay. Um, and then. I know the Boys and Girls Club is here and I know you've talked to the neighbors a lot.
Yeah.
So how, what's the temperature of all that?
The Boys and Girls Club, we have, I mean, I will speak to Julie. I mean, I. I sort of sit on both sides of the table candlestick during that conversation.
Yeah.
Um, it's been very good. I mean, I think. The club, myself, and I'm also right around the corner. Everybody's interested in doing something great for Central Square. Um, the access, I've actually always questioned myself whether it's better. It's, it's so easy getting out of the club. Ninety-nine percent of the time, you come out, take a left, take a right. So do we need to bring it to the Rotary? I've always thought it was potentially helpful some days to get out and take a left, but. Ninety-five percent of the time, I don't think it's going to, it's going to matter. But again, Julie, you know, if it's the request of the board can comment on it. Um, we are also looking to do some things in the back of the club. So that potentially upgrading, maybe even sooner rather than later, the canal, like. The canal, I think eventually is going to be part of the bike system. Or I think that's what I'm hearing. So what upgrades exactly? I'm not, I'm not sure.
You're not going to touch Bucky's hill, eh?
I'm going to touch, I'll keep access to it. Um, but we're going to try to get, so the kids can actually get sooner rather than later, come through the back and then maybe have. Be able to come in through the backside of the club. We still need to work those things out because. We're having some conversations about maybe some excess land back there. Could it be utilized for some additional landscaping or parking, something like that?
And the neighbors are generally on board with what's happening here or not quite yet?
In my opinion, they, I, I would say it's been very good conversations.
Yeah.
Um, they've raised, just like you guys have throughout the whole time, let's say, I'm trying to think. The biggest issue that got raised at the neighborhood meeting was drainage. And frankly, most people were like, the canal plugs. It's not always your problem, but we kind of need somebody, we need a project to get the city, this is my words. We need the project to get the city to listen to us that we have to figure out how to fix this problem together. So they've been putting pressure on kind of on us through, through us to try to help figure it out. And it's not a problem that John's property creates. It's an area wide problem that's.
Exists today.
Yeah, I mean, there's some things that we know can be done. There was actually a permit granted. To direct, no, I would say direct to clean up the, the canal out. How many years ago, John?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, and then it never got done. So those permits may have lapsed. So going in and doing things like that greatly going to help.
I really feel like we can fix this. We can help, we can help the city fix this.
Yeah.
I really do.
But the biggest issues have been the drainage, traffic around the area in general. How can you help? Like. I would say to a person, everybody has said, you know, cut off the Lowell Street. Bend, which we've all used and probably all use it every day.
Yeah.
And then I was agnostic to it. I mean, I think it's a great idea to expand the park, but I'm like, if everybody feels they want to keep it to. Take the right, then keep it. Nobody's wanting, nobody's wanted to keep it. Everybody's wanted to expand it. Everybody said, keep the building, the existing building. Those were, I'd say, the biggest issues was just traffic. Upgrade the street, please. It looks terrible.
Yeah.
Um, and keep the existing building. Um, those are the main issues. Again, I was not going to speak for the whole public, but that's, that's basically what we've heard.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
Councilor Dylan?
Thank you. So. I don't want to get too far ahead of us here, but as we proceed through this, we're hearing more and more from the neighbors. So. Councilor DeMambo took care of one of the questions, but I'll follow it up even a little bit more. With the Hart Street neighbors and the Middlesex Canal situation. We have. A situation here already. This would be great if we can figure this out and make sure not only to not make it worse. But improve it so that it's not a problem that it's been over the years. So that's one of the things we've heard. The other thing that we've heard is what's this going to do on the impact? For the Hurd Wyman School, for the population there. And I believe for the public as well, we'll talk about that. There's a study that you folks are doing on that. So that's forthcoming.
We do have some, um. Some preliminary information from the firm that is studying it.
All right. Um, we already, Council Papalato hit you with one of my questions. Will the townhouses go up for private sale as far as condominiums? Because we all like to see. Home ownership. More stable, more stake in the city and.
Right.
So, and I know you haven't figured that out, but that's one of the questions that's come up.
Yeah.
We're, again, for the public's knowledge, we're awaiting the traffic impact study. Which will be coming, but we're not there yet. And. And just for the general public, you guys are in front of the planning board tomorrow at seven o'clock.
That's correct.
So those are just some of the things that we've heard recently. And that as we proceed, we'll address it and be able to speak more about it.
I think just to, on to the, the, um, the hurled, or the impacts on the schools. It's not just the hurdle, but it's auto grade. They're estimating, just to give you a preview of what they're saying. Around ten students, school age students on the apartments, the two, two of the, the flat buildings. And it could be as many as fifteen or sixteen in the townhouses because those will likely be two and three bedrooms. So they're saying all, all overall between twenty-five and thirty is what they're, is what they're saying, based on. Other regional, you know, examples of what the projects are doing. So that's just a preview.
That's just a preview.
Yeah, of what will be in the report in the, in the fiscal impact study.
Okay, and that will be looked at really close. Based on the history of those studies and other subdivisions in developments throughout the city.
Right.
We'll, we'll look at those and see if we can figure out the real numbers and the real impact compared to what is proposed here.
Yeah. And then on traffic, we do have, we're probably ninety percent done with the traffic study. So we. Because our traffic engineer couldn't be here tonight, we figured let's wait till full council down the eighteenth and then. However, Joe advises, or you all want, when you want the report, if you wanted a few days ahead of time to read it, so you're prepared for that meeting, that's fine. We should have it. Probably. By the end of the week, I would think, ready to submit. So we could submit it, everybody can read it. And we can, we can take questions on, on the, on the, I think it's the eighteenth, full council.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Viall?
Thank you. Um, Councilor DeMambo and Councilor, uh, Dylan, or President Dylan actually took some of my questions, but. I find it hard to believe there'll only be twenty-five to thirty kids attending the schools from here. I have a couple of big subdivisions over near me of townhouses and.
Yeah.
They predicted there'd be maybe fifteen kids going and I can tell you there's a lot more than that.
Not the one that Delfi did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, we should throw in a list and have them compare.
Yeah.
Um, in my, it, it, only in my experience, the numbers were usually six to seven kids per hundred units.
Right.
Of apartments and then townhouses. It can be, it can be heightened. So they're, they're almost doubling that number for townhouses.
All right, um, question?
Affordable.
Yeah.
Different.
Yeah, that happens a lot.
Right. Um, since FEMA updated the flood plan, how much of this project or this property now falls under that?
Nick, do you know?
How much of the property?
It falls under the new flood plan.
They're changing the cleanup house.
Yeah, we reviewed the draft maps. Um. We have to study it further, but I don't believe it affects the, the flood zone in this location that much.
Okay.
There are other locations around the city where it does change quite significantly, but not, not in this problem.
Okay. Going back to the proposed park that you have, who's going to maintain that in perpetuity?
It's a good question. I think it's something that still has to be determined.
Because the DPW and Parks Department are stretched very thin now, as it is with all the green space they have.
Who, if I ask, who does it now? Is it the Parks Department? Because it's actually very well catched now.
Yeah.
Is it? So is that, does that fall under, um?
We wouldn't want to disturb the protocol.
I also want to, wouldn't want to be adding more to their plate as it is.
No, we understand. I think that's the discussion point. We can have that conversation. I mean, if it's. Depending how the landscaping goes and who's maintaining everything, so it's a good, it's a good question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Counselor Tori, you go.
I'll just, the statement, I know that. We've had several projects that have come before us before with regards to overlay districts and just for the education of everybody here and at home. This is about the zoning ordinance that we're talking about, but we do appreciate that the petitioner has provided us with a. Very advanced look into the future with regards to what will be coming before us, uh, as a special permit, because it's, it's helpful. To the neighbors and our constituents to see what might be coming and it's not just a, a zoning map change. Um, I know I would echo the sentiments of my fellow counselors with regards to, you know, the community meeting that you had at the Glastavino Building. I know one of the major concerns was the folks over on Hart Street.
Right.
And the drainage impacts on, um, on the canal and maybe if we could make that better and alleviate that. Um, I think the intersection idea is great. Um, I've been talking to the city engineer probably since I've been on the council about that particular alteration. Uh, so being able to address that through this project would be great. Um, and again, like Councilor Dylan said. Anytime where we can have any type of development in the city that. Make sure that the folks have a stake in it by homeownership is huge. I mean, we understand that you've got.
We're trying.
You've got your margins to, to deal with, to make this a reality and it's totally understandable. Uh, but that, that type of ownership and stake in the community, I think is important because it, it. To me, that tells me that folks are going to take care of these buildings in the future.
Yep.
Um, let's see. I thank you for the elevations because one of my constituents had brought that up at the public hearing. Um, and I'll provide that. Attorney Tabby, can we get an electronic copy of the presentation?
Yes.
Uh, this evening, so we can get that out to the members of the council that weren't here this evening. Uh, any other questions?
I just have.
Councilor DeMambo?
I just want, um. When I'm thinking about it, and it's just rolling through my head. To, to, to eliminate Lowell Street dogleg and channel it all to Wilcox. I would definitely focus or put, pay closer attention, I think, on definitely the light signals there, the traffic signals. And the reason why I'm saying that, they might have to be updated. Um, the, the programming system, the control panel, whatever, whatever you might need to do in there. Because my, my concern is in my head that there's going to be cars queuing up down. Lowell Street. And, and that's a concern. The only way I think to, to navigate that would definitely be the control system and the traffic lights. Now, whether it's there as well as down at the Mishawam light, you know, uh. And have them work in conjunction with one another. Um, it's just something that I just have, have you had traffic study people and engineers kind of encompassed? Because it may affect signals in two or three locations as well. Just to keep it all flowing in a timely manner.
Totally right, Councilor. Um, it's all new signals. We can't do what needs to be done there with the existing signals. It's expensive. We're going to be going for grants, um, mass works grants in cooperation with the city. Offset work is just like five million dollars in offset work.
I, I, I spoke to Engineer Corey last week at a department head meeting. And I was shocked at what intersections cost to upgrade.
Yeah.
Twenty-six intersections.
Yeah.
And what it costs the city to maintain. It's in the millions.
It's, it is amazing. So you're absolutely right. That right hand turn needs to be working all the time to drain the vein.
Almost have like sensors too that can sense the traffic and see kind of how many cars are queued up. In pretty much all directions, because we don't want them backing up on the clover leaf or the, the, the rotary. And we don't want them, you know, backing up down Wall Street. So it's kind of.
And we want the residents on Main Street to be able to get out of the driveway. We heard that.
And they, you don't want to be sitting there having dinner like I do and you can look out your bay window and. Everybody's kind of sitting there going, hey, what do you eat? You know, because they're all lined up. They're all queued up in front of your house.
Right.
Just something to be thoughtful of.
That particular thing is not a problem, but we're not. We're, we're owning it together and see if we can make the last condition better than. And if we didn't do this at all, you know?
And I, and I think I can speak on behalf of all of us. We appreciate it. We, we truly do. Thank you, thank you.
Peter, on the, on the traffic study, is there going to be an impact in terms of the intersection being a four-way intersection with the entrance for Charles Gardner? To see what the impacts would be?
Um. I, they'll definitely take it into.
Because I know, I know my personal, my personal opinion.
Yeah.
On the issue would be to funnel all the Boys Club traffic down to the Rotary and then.
And then back out.
And then back out. Um, just because I think it would, it would alleviate any queuing or backing up because people are trying to.
Take a left.
To come out of Charles Gardner. And maybe that could be converted to like a walkway so the kids could still, you know, walk into the club, but.
Uh, as I said before.
I mean, that's just a personal preference. I just want you to keep that in mind and.
Yeah.
Know where I'm coming from.
We're totally agnostic and willing to put it in. So it's not anything that's, uh, it's not a. Money thing. It's not like we're not, we're not planning on doing it. So it's not anything that's, uh, it's not a money thing. It's not like we're not, we're not planning on doing it, doing it. Um, I would say in the busiest times, if I get asked Julie, busiest times Julie for the club, what would you say they are?
Three thirty-six.
Pick up, pick up to go home? Okay.
Yeah, we are looking at, you didn't ask this, but, um, we heard from some residents, including Rachel, about how, how are kids going to travel through the site safely? And we had talked, we talked with Julie and, um, we, we're prepared, we're prepared to do something um, along the bike path. Even if the city doesn't do something, we'll do something temporary to clear that, put some crusher run on there and make a path that comes around, um, comes around here and back with the boys and girls foot permission, come down the path and then come down here and back rather than coming through the property and have to worry about, um, kids and dodging dodging covers and stuff like that.
Because most of those tenants are coming from the school, which is just, um.
Right, so we can, we can make it clean and nice and open enough so it's safe back there and then walk through. Um, we'll do that. So we'll work together with the city or whatever. Anyway, it's probably going to take the city longer to act than, than we, than we act typically. And I'd like to address one more thing, which is condominiums. We've heard it over and over and over again. We're, we're trying to do that. The, the cost to acquire the homes. If this was five years ago, it would be a no-brainer. But the cost of those properties has more than doubled. And some of those properties have tripled in the last three years. It's, it's absolutely phenomenal. I bought the first property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's properties that are, that are not as good as the first property we bought are six times, seven times that. So it's, it's very difficult to rationalize the land cost. It, it doesn't make sense almost. You put the land cost out back and that's what we're trying to do. What would help us is if we could, um, get relief on the affordable, on the condos. You can keep the affordable in the back and on the condos not have to need the affordable. Just saying, just saying. It's, it's really, it's really tough to make the economics work.
Which may, which may minimize some of the school age discussion as well, but that's probably something we should just explore again. There were, if I may, there were only, so of the seventeen, eighteen questions that you all raised, there was only three. Let me just run through them really quick, really quick. Somebody asked how many units are currently occupied on the street? I'm not sure which credit for these. There's seventeen units. There's ten occupied is what we think. Um, and I'm going to skip over a lot of these others. We either talked about them or they're part of the traffic study. Will the residents have to pay for parking? Um, we do have spaces for every unit that will be assigned. And if people want more than one, there'll be enough for those. So I think where with Council Bruin, I think where she may have been alluding to with some of the problems at the Wilbon Mall where people are paying, not paying, blah, 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 I think, I'm not, I'm not with you here tonight. Um, but we don't think we're going to have that problem because people are going to have an assigned spot. Whether they will pay for them or not, we, we are still trying to determine because there's going to be different levels and underground, et cetera.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pretend to speak for Council Mrs. Bruin and her lack of her presence tonight, but I think her concern was parking, uh, residents parking off-site.
Yeah.
In, in the residential areas around the property as opposed to paying the fifty-dollar amount of what.
Right. Yeah, so we hope that's not going to be an issue. And then I think it might have been Rob, you had asked about, um, potentially retail on the street. We think we'd like, we think focus should be on the other side and upgrading the Jack's side of it and not on that side where there really isn't any now and it's not great for parking. Um, these buildings also aren't great. If we were going to bring one of the bigger buildings up to the street, I think it would work better. So we're not advocating for it. We hear you. We've talked about it internally. We don't think we can best spot for it. But that's open for discussion. That's just not sure where, like.
You are creating, excuse me, kind of a community here.
Yeah.
And there's nothing in that area at all that addresses it. So, you know, this is a great opportunity to add it. So, you know, I'm certainly going to push for that.
Yeah.
When we get to the special permit, ask like a things.
Understood. Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think that was, I mean, there's some other stuff in here, but you guys fall out most of the questions and the rest are going to be traffic related, so.
Just that you bring up the parking.
Yeah.
What we'll be looking at as well as other subdivisions and condominium projects that went off in apartments.
Yeah.
I know the manbo has a, uh, situation in North Wilbon that he deals with. That's a fairly recent project and just not enough parking. So just to know that's a very important part of the piece of the puzzle here.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had, we're actually having a conversation right now with a lot of the people who do the feasibility studies for it, getting actual data. Because if we underpark this, we're only cheating ourselves at the end of the day. We won't be able to lease them up.
And again, not to speak for Counselor DeMambo, but it's become a problem that they want the city to fix and we have nothing to do with it. It was a private entity that came in and developed it and didn't provide enough parking, fair enough to say.
Yes.
Yeah, Counselor DeMambo.
Um, yeah, because they, they have some sort of a matrix in the engineering, you know, handbook that says, you know, one point one per, per unit or one point two or one point five. My way of thinking is one bedroom, two cars. You got a two-bedroom, you know, allocate for maybe three cars because it seems like there's always two vehicles per dwelling, always. And if you, if you, if you engineer it for one, where's that other car going to go? You know, Mr. Smith has it, Mrs. Smith has a car, where's the other car go? And the problem we're having is the on-street parking is becoming more and more of an increasing problem throughout the city, especially during this last weather event. We have no place for these cars to go. And then when the tickets go out and the tow trucks go out, people get extremely upset. When we put up no parking signs, they get really upset. When we start doing the alternative, you know, you got to park during the winter months on this side of the street, they get upset. So this is something definitely we have to look at, you know? The, the numbers that they come up with in the engineering handbook, we know why the, like they are. But the true reality is there never seems to be enough parking, especially in condo situations. Because if they have a child that's teenage age, but all of a sudden gets a driver's license, now you get three vehicles. And they, you know, the handbook doesn't account for that. And then we have problems that we hear continuously and we have no way to fix it. So it's something definitely to keep in mind. Thank you.
Attorney Tabby?
Yeah, just one final thing. I have a red line of the, um, of the ordinance I'd just like to submit and we can discuss it next Tuesday. Basically, it's just a cleanup. It's actually section three eighty-five, not thirty-four. And the biggest change is we eliminated all of the solar uses except for roof mounted. Other than that, it's just a cleanup of the ordinance, so.
And Attorney Tabby, this is going to be presented to the planning board tomorrow?
Yes.
Yep.
Any questions for members of the committee on the revised language for the zoning ordinance of the overlay district, I should say?
Mostly clerical.
Yes.
Yeah. And prevents the carports with solar panels on it. Which such were a hot button issue at the school, I'd be able to say.
Any questions from the committee? I guess the recommendation from the chair would be we leave this in committee, get the planning board recommendation or any updates from them. We'll circle back and answer any other questions or have members that weren't here this evening at the regular meeting of the city council. And then our next committee meeting, we'll hopefully have a committee report come up.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Sir.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.
All right. Next up, we have the committee on special permits. And, um, I'm Counselor Viola. I'm going to be chairing this tonight. With me on the committee is Counselor Mercer Bruin, who's absent, Counselor Campbell, who's absent, Counselor DeMambo and Counselor DeMers. First thing on the agenda is the reading approval of minutes from January thirteenth.
Motion is expected to be reading and approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three-nothing. Next item on the agenda, Tree Top Home LLC for a special permit under Wilbon zoning ordinance section seven point three to raise a pre-existing non-conforming four-family dwelling and rebuild a new four-story dwelling at By Bennett Street.
Good evening, everyone. Again, for the record, Attorney James Giuliano on behalf of the applicant uh, who is here tonight along with the architect, the engineer could not make it. But now we're concerned, we have some, not all questions. Uh, then we have, I think last meeting, last public hearing was probably our first working meeting for this project in a while. And I think we, we got some good information. Um, I have submitted electronically and physically, uh, proposed first draft of conditions based on discussions with some of the neighbors, discussions with, uh, individuals that were actually at the public hearing relating to their concerns. Um, and, and real briefly, I'd like to go over the, you know, what we drafted and sort of have a discussion based on that. But I think a lot of these were addressing what the neighbors were concerned about. Uh, specifically relating to placement of the dumpster. I think, um, dumpster will be provided on-site. Uh, I think currently there is city pickup just probably because it's been like that forever. But I don't think we can assume that that's going to carry forward, um, with management once the building is, the new building is up. So we are, uh, able to put dumpsters, uh, on-site. That exact location hasn't been determined yet. But obviously it will be in accordance with the ordinance, which, uh, will put it in, um, cupboard area so that people can't get to it, uh, fencing, things like that. Uh, the other thing was relating to, uh, fire protection. Obviously we were aware of it at the time. We're still aware of it. But, uh, sprinklers will have to be installed. Obviously this is more than a three-unit residential building. So we're going to have to add those. Uh, parking spaces shall be eight, obviously, as the plans will submit. No parking shall be allowed in the building. Uh, if, if you have been by the, the property now, there is two cars that pretty much have parking in front of the building, almost on the sidewalk. That will be a condition that no longer that will happen. So I think that'll be some space that can actually create some green space and some, some landscaping to, uh, to make it a little bit more appealing. Uh, fencing, so obviously with the parking being so close, uh, I think fencing was in order as far as the sides, uh, side setbacks. So uniform fencing will be, uh, on both side setbacks. So that obviously lights, things like that will be contained with on-site. No headlights will be on the neighbors. Uh, typical stuff like rodent control, dust control. Um, and then obviously we did commit to putting, uh, pervious pavement with all asphalt or, or sort of pavers, but only impervious, which right now it's just all impervious, which is allowing stuff to just sort of go onto the street. Um, you know, so now it'll be able to infiltrate on-site, at least most of the building. Uh, I had an interesting, oh, last one before I go into my conversation with Jay Duran. Um, and again, the last one, which was important, uh, applicant is restricted from creating a bedroom in the basement. We were fine with that. And then doesn't need to be a condition, but we are willing to create a half bath on the first floor instead of a full bath. So they'll be full, uh, each bedroom will have a bathroom, first floor will have a powder room, essentially a half bath. So we are, we are set with that. Uh, I did speak to, to Jay Duran today and, and again, I mentioned at the, the public hearing that I spoke to Jay Corey as well. I think, I'm not going to speak for, for Jay Duran and I'll have him speak on this, but I think as far as the drainage is concerned, I think, you know, he's in agreement with that title thirteen of the ordinance, municipal code is strictly for engineering. Um, and I think we have addressed it and basically not to beat a dead horse on it, but it, it is within city engineering. However, anything under twenty thousand square feet of disturbance does not require any drainage at all. And I think we're at seven thousand plus square feet, so we wouldn't be required to, to do any drainage. And I think that was, uh, confirmed and corroborated by, by Jay Corey with that submittal, uh, last week. So, um, regarding the water and sewer, I talked to Jay and I think the disconnect was that Jay was asking, and I think going forward, and this is a separate discussion, but going forward, uh, what ends up happening is the water and sewer connection is determined obviously with the building permit process. After we get the special permit, we go for a building permit and then if it's determined that the size of the water supply is not enough, then we have to upgrade it, which again, we will have to do in this case. So this is something we have to do anyhow. So I think for the purposes of this application, we're certainly willing to supply all that to, to Jay Duran now. Um, again, it has to be done. I think it's something that's pretty easy. I did speak to the, uh, the engineer. Flow will have to be determined at a later point, uh, water flow, because that's something a, a mechanical engineer determines. Again, it's just something down the road for ongoing procedures. Um, you know, we can determine, you know, the council can determine how to, how to handle it. But we won't be able to determine a water flow, but we can determine, uh, the connections, the water and sewer connections. And I think based on what we're discovering, they're going to have to be, um, upgraded, which is totally fine. So the specifics will be determined, uh, between Jay Duran and my client and the engineer. Not a problem. So I think we're, we're willing to do that as well. That's basically what came out of my conversation with, with Jay Duran today. Uh, because I know that was sort of a sticky point and it was sort of, you know, not clarity as to where we go on this. So we're willing to do that. Again, there are certain things I would just recommend, you know, to the committee and to the council that, um, you know, we, we do tackle at the building permit process typically like we would. Um, but I think our conditions that I've submitted have addressed, I'm sure there's going to be more and that's fine. But I think they've addressed the majority of what was discussed at the public hearing and with others. So, um, that being said, certainly I have my client here and the architect that can answer, myself who can answer any questions.
Any comments or question from people on the committee? Counselor DeMers.
Attorney Giuliano, might I suggest that language should be included in our conditions where a demolition and debris removal plan would be filed with the building commissioner? Uh, especially if you're going to be raising the whole property and residents have already, uh, mentioned concerns about the parking on the street. There should be a plan filed with the building commissioner as to where the construction equipment is going to be put or the demolition equipment and then how the orderly removal of the debris from the site is going to occur. Um, the other one would be a construction plan for when the construction, uh, of the dwelling is going to take place, where there's going to be parking. Is there going to be a need for detail on the street and so forth? That should be, uh, created and filed with the building commissioner. Uh, let me see. Have you had any discussions with the, uh, the neighbor that mentioned something along the lines of a retaining wall on the side of the property?
I have not, but I did speak to my client. I think that is something so, again, I don't know the exact dimensions of the wall, which we will get cross-sections for, but I think there is some room over there where we are willing to plant something on that top side.
Okay.
Um, specifics obviously to the council or, you know, I understand Abercrombie is a good screen. Um, they also suck up some water, but there are some trees that suck up more water. Uh, it's just, you know, I can talk to him and try to get a hold of him and see what he specifically wants. But we are willing to do that, uh, just to provide a little screening, suck up some more water and kind of get that little landscaping feel where we're taking the back off.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor DeMambo, any questions?
No, my, my only question was that retaining wall and if there would be any type of shrubbery or anything on the top of that wall. Um, but you said you'd be working with your butters, which that's fine with me.
Attorney Giuliano, do you, do you intend on submitting updated plans with the half-bath?
Uh, we are. I'm going to submit half revised plans with everything, yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, hopefully sooner than later, so.
Great, thank you. I'm making motion that we open it up to the non-voting members.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three-nothing. President Dylan?
Thank you. Attorney Giuliano, I know you and Superintendent Duran spoke. Um, was there still any concern on his part about the parking situation?
He didn't bring the parking up to. He didn't bring the parking up today when I spoke to him. Um, and it could be just because, you know, we are providing eight, but as far as, I can reach out to him again, um, to see if he has any concerns with turning radiuses and things like that, but he did not today, or previously.
And the proposal in front of us now still is for three-bedroom units compared to two-bedroom units, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there any appetite from the petitioner to drop it to two-bedroom units?
We could speak, I mean, everything's, you know, on the table, I can speak to him, uh, tonight or tomorrow, we can discuss that.
Um, and as far as, thank you, and the retaining wall, you, you got me sooner than I could get at it. Um, if you need help getting in touch with the neighbor or making that contact, I'll be glad to help you with that.
The thing I will, and I'll ask Diana or Lindsay, I, I think, I don't have his, I think he's directly behind.
He is.
So I can, okay, I just wanted to confirm that, so.
And as I say, I'll be glad to help you with that, thank you. That's all, thank you.
What is the will of the committee?
I don't know, I don't know if we, the committee report would be appropriate at this time with the plans not having been resubmitted.
Okay.
So I think, I think we'll just hold it in committee.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.